I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education for August 6th. This is our regular meeting. Ms. Crenshaw, will you call the roll?
Mr. Hines, Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Crenshaw, here. Mr. Trembo.
Here.
So we have two absences tonight. Mr. Hines is on vacation and Treasurer Scott Gainer is also on vacation. So we wish them well. Hope they're having a good time. And I will turn the meeting over to our Superintendent Elizabeth Kirby for awards and recognitions.
Good evening and welcome. Tonight, I'd like to recognize the many CHUHT members who dedicated their summer break to serve our students. Our summer programming this year included Tiger Camp, Middle School Math Camp, Camp Invention, High School Summer School, AP Success Camp, Right at School, and the Noble and Oxford Learning Center camps. Dozens of team members collectively contributed, so I will read the names of those who RSVP'd and who I've seen in the audience tonight. We know that the bad weather meant that most people could not make it. And so, I don't have the names of the people.
No, there's too many.
Oh, okay.
It's easy to say who was gonna be here.
And then we would, yes, yes, yes. I do want to acknowledge Dr. Jenkins, who led all of the coordination for the summer camps this summer. My understanding is that we had 436 students in our camp that was all the different camps happening at the high school. So definitely has been a busy and productive summer for students. And we'll be sharing some data from summer camp at the next board meeting, so you'll have more specific information. I do want to ask our lone representative of all of that hard summer work, Anjali Rosestill, to please come up. Yes, you have to take your picture. Come on up, please, Anjali. You'll be representing. We're gonna ask Dr. Jenkins to come up as well.
Okay.
It's not going to be a very wide shot.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, nice. Pack it in.
Oh, no.
What was it, number 436?
436 students, yeah.
That is good.
I also want to note that we had several community partners who facilitated programs for our students. Those include the Reaching Heights Summer Music Camp, Heights Middle School Shorts Film Camp, Lake Erie, Inc., which provided a camp for 25 Noble and Oxford students in partnership with the school's CLC coordinators, and Case Western Reserve University, who provided the National Youth Sports Program for 20 Noble and Oxford students in partnership with the school's CLC coordinators. And as noted with Anjali's picture, AVI Fresh provided nutritious meals for campers, transportation ensured students go to and from camp safely, and building staff ensured the spaces were clean, safe, and ready for learning and fun. I want to also acknowledge that ODA continued to have their camp at Monticello this summer as well. Everyone put so much time and effort into preparing the programs, making sure students had everything that they needed, making it a great opportunity for our students. And that concludes tonight's recognitions.
I also want to thank everyone who worked summer camp. I know that takes time out of what would be their time off, and I really appreciate it because it's so important for our kids. The next item on our agenda is statements from the audience. And the board asks that you please refrain from mentioning specific students or employees by name in your comments. If your comments involve a student or an employee, the board asks that you please do not address the individual by name. We ask that you remain cognizant that we are in open meeting and possibly in the presence of students. Also, please limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, the microphone will be muted. Thank you. We have one person who signed up tonight. It's Angel Fasolo, and her topic is, "We continue to promote and raise salaries of employees named as defendants in federal lawsuits against the district." Ms. Fasolo, will you please come forward?
No problem. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I don't have anything prepared tonight, but after last meeting where there were public comments, I spoke to a couple of people in leadership here, and it was predicted that I'd be back at another meeting saying the same old thing, which is dismissive. But I will be coming back to all the public comments, all the regular meetings to speak about the, right now, two federal lawsuits alleging Title IX violations related to sexual assault in our schools. A number of plaintiffs, a number of defendants. At the last meeting and multiple times, I've asked the district to consider putting the named defendants on leave. At the last meeting afterwards, somebody named in that lawsuit, basically, in my opinion, dismissively said, "They've been named in many lawsuits, and they have always been dismissed." I would hope that it be taken a little more seriously and that a little more respect be given when members of the community speak out, because they're concerned that students were sexually assaulted in our schools, and that the people who are the alleged defendants are getting raises, getting promoted, and getting better protection and treated better than the students, families, staff members who are wronged in this district. So, yeah, I will keep speaking up and speaking out about it. I hope other people do, too, and I do believe more people will start to speak up. This past week, when there was some city drama, not Cleveland Heights, but not the school board, but Cleveland Heights drama, there was a post on social media between a board member and a city councilperson. And a city councilperson finally called out a member of the board when they called out the city, saying, basically, "You've got these sexual assault allegations to deal with, and the mishandling and mistreatment of people." And there was a little back and forth, and that's disappeared, but screenshots persist and people spread it around. And I hope more people start to call out this district. I understand that you can't just place everybody on leave because they're named in a lawsuit, but you do have a pattern of protecting the worst in this district, at the expense of students who've been violated, staff who have been mistreated, retaliated against. And you do know that. I do think this time you guys are actually running a bit scared, and I'm not happy about that. My only hope with that is that you start changing your behavior and your actions. I still ask that the board members who are involved.
Your time is up, Ms. Fasolo. Thank you for your comments.
My time is not up.
Yes, it is. I have my timer. Your time is up.
Two, one, zero.
All right, go ahead. You've got, I'll give you three more seconds. Go ahead.
This is the new MO.
Thank you, Jody.
Ms. Fasolo, I do just want to point out a couple of things. Number one, just because you're named in a lawsuit does not mean you're guilty, that that is why there are lawsuits and why things go to trial. In this country, you are presumed innocent until proven guilty. And I will also say that none of the defendants of our staff are accused of sexual assault in that lawsuit. So I'm just making clarification, because I'm not saying you did. I'm just clarifying it for the record for somebody who maybe didn't hear that and now is just watching your comments on the video or in the audience. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I move to consider the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
I'm happy that we've got second-generation employees joining the ranks of the district. I think that is two people now who are, were students who are now working and have parents who work for the district, and that's sort of, it's always exciting to see. Makes me happy.
I also think it's amazing that we have, that our students have the opportunity to participate in magnificent cultural immersion experiences, and that our football team will be traveling. So I'm excited about all of those things for our students.
You took the words out of my mouth, because I'm excited about that as well. I also want to-
Can we all go to Taiwan, please?
Yeah, I know. That'd be fascinating. I also want to thank our generous community members for their donations. We did have a donation this time.
I know that donation was listed as anonymous, but the name of the company, Terror Cycle, do we know anything about the company that made the donation? I was just interested. Terror Cycle?
Apparently not.
Yeah, just curious.
I'm sorry, who's second was it?
Oh, that was me.
Phil. And if there's no further discussion, Ms. Crenshaw, will you take the roll?
Mr. Hines, Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw, yes. Mr. Trembo.
Yes.
And now I will turn it back over to our Superintendent Elizabeth Kirby for the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So this evening, I'll be sharing updates from July of 2024. The summer has been a time for summer camps, and also, you know, certainly vacation for district staff. But we have been able to join students in some great opportunities through, once again, the Marvelous Gear Up Grant. So here you will see pictures from a trip that four Heights students took with their parents to the National Youth Leadership Summit. Our sophomores Jackson Mernyak and Skylar Gentry, who are rising, I believe, I think, I know Jackson's a rising 10th grader, and Tashia Strickland and Tyler Wilson, I believe, rising 9th grader, is that right? Were at the NCEP National Conference. This was a youth leadership summit that is a three-and-a-half-day leadership training that culminates in a final presentation to over 2,000 members of the Gear Up community from all over the country. It was an opportunity to represent the over 571,236 Gear Up students nationwide while developing leadership skills, showcasing individual talents, and learning from other Gear Up students. Each student brought a family member to serve as their chaperone. Family members also participated in family leadership lessons at the conference. So I want to thank Bob Swiger for his leadership and his team in making arrangements for our students and parents to attend this event. You'll see on the next slide that we also had our Gear Up advisor, Ms. Jasmine Arnold, and our CTE Business and Community Engagement Specialist, Dr. Carmen Daniel present during one of the breakout sessions. Their title, their session was called Gear Up 2028 Beyond Graduation. And we're excited that Skylar and Jackson are currently serving as student ambassadors during this week's freshman orientation program at CHHS, leading students on tours of the building, serving on the student panel that presents to all incoming 9th graders. And further, parents Caitlin and Corey have served in the parent panel and have shared their learning and experiences with parents and family members who have been in attendance at freshman orientation this week. So it's awesome that already the students are having an opportunity to show their leadership and make an impact, in addition to their parents, too. I just think that parent-to-parent engagement is so very powerful. And so this last photo just captures, looks like this is the whole group, is that right, Bob, who attended? Thank you for the pictures. And just a great opportunity. Gear Up, again, just continues to just provide us with awesome opportunities for kids. In terms of goals to, over this summer as well, we do close out the end of the 23-24 school year, having the continuous improvement meetings where we look at the strategic action plans that the departments have been implementing during the 23-24 school year. So we had those meetings for HR, communications, community partnerships, family engagement, college and career readiness, and business services. And so we review our key performance indicators, look at our progress. When we have our work sessions in September and August, we'll be sharing that information with the wider community. In terms of families and community, Noble Fund Friday continues throughout the summer, most recently on July 12th at the Heights Library. The staff, our CLC staff, work with students and families to support them with the summer reading plans and signing up for library cards and checking out books on their summer reading lists. We also have CLC summer camps being held at Noble, July 8th to the 26th, and at Oxford, July 29th through August 9th. So again, just some additional opportunities to provide enrichment for our students right at their school sites this summer. So I want to thank our CLC coordinators, I know that they were going to be here this evening, but with the weather, didn't come, for coordinating this, and then our partners like Lake Erie, Inc., and then the Oxford teachers, who have been working this summer on the Oxford camp.
Liz, do we know how many students were involved in those camps?
It's a smaller number. It might be like 20, you know, something like that. Is that about right? Mike, you think Oxford's probably, it was about, I know for Oxford was like the class of rising 5th graders we were inviting to that one.
Okay, that's a good number.
Yeah.
Good number. Thank you.
We also have, it is kindergarten kickoff season coming up, so here you'll see the Family Connections kickoff sessions. They go from August 7th at Noble through August 20th at Oxford, each session 6:00 to 7:30 PM. So it's always fun if you want to kind of stop by and see that experience for students and families as they get ready to make that big giant step into kindergarten. And we really are thankful for our partnership with Family Connections that we've had for a long time. So this year, we are participating in the State of Ohio Stay in the Game Network, sponsored by the Cleveland Browns. You know, lots of districts across the state are engaged in this. One of the first things that we have as an opportunity for families is to sign a Stay in the Game attendance pledge. And so those families who sign that pledge get entered into a raffle to attend the first preseason game against the Green Bay Packers. We've had over 300 families actually take the pledge already, so.
Already? Awesome.
So I think there's something about staying in the game that does attract attention.
Excellent.
So, yeah, so we will be pulling those names and those families, you know, we hope to get some social media from them to, as they attend that preseason game. In terms of staff, we do have new staff orientation coming up on August 12th. This week, we have our TAP retreat as well with all of the district, the school TAP teams that will be held at Roxborough Middle School. I'm very excited that we have some new leadership roles as Dr. Gould has gone to stow Monroe Falls, lead that district. We did make some slight adjustments in our organization chart. So Dr. Lombardo has moved from Assistant Superintendent of HR and Operations to Assistant Superintendent. Rachel Coleman, who was formerly our Director of Principal Leadership and Development, is now our Chief of Schools overseeing all of our schools. And Mike Jenkins, who was formerly our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, is now our Chief Academic Officer. So through these changes, we were able to streamline our organization, to align our departments, to work connected to in-school support, which really represents Mrs. Coleman's work. And then the academic inputs as it relates to the support for teachers and curriculum and academic programs, which is Dr. Jenkins' work as well. You guys know that these are very seasoned administrators who have done just excellent work in the district, just wonderful commitment to students. And it's just been exciting to see them take heavy responsibility, because it's a lot, but really run with that with great energy and enthusiasm. So I want to thank you, Rachel and Mike, already just for all you've done this summer, as we get ready for the new school year. And of course, Paul Lombardo, all you continue to do. So we have quite a few, you know, it's that season, so school is tuning up right now. This Sunday, this Saturday, we have our Heights Family Resource Fair, 11 to 1, at Delisle Options. Then next week, new staff orientation. The week after that, convocation. And we will have our first day of school with the kindergarten staggered start starting on August 21st. And we will also be having a middle school staggered start, also starting on August 21st. So the principals, that information's going out to families, so they are aware of that. We'll continue to promote that, so people are aware of that as well. Our next work session is an August 27th board work session, and we will be doing presentations on the first, first three, well, the last three goals of the strategic plan. One thing I want to also say that I did not put here is that cabinet will continue with our equity work. And so the step that we are right now is developing district-wide non-negotiables. We've laid the groundwork of training for all of the teachers, and the BLT teams have led that work. But we now need to make decisions as a district aligned to our equity policy on what we want our non-negotiables to be. So Lisa Hunt and Rachel Coleman will be leading that work, but we will be also engaging board members around that, too, because it'll be important that we have kind of a comprehensive view of what that, what that looks like. Our equity work is extremely important, and I was reminded of that when listening to one of the public comments from the last board meeting where an individual made a statement about the race of students and who's engaged in different types of infractions. It really bothered me, and I invite that individual and also others who want to discuss issues around equity and race to meet with me. We, this work is extremely important. It's representative of who we are as a district, and I never want any of our students or families to feel that we are not doing our best to align our work and our beliefs, philosophies, and actions to that. So in the spirit of continuous improvement, there's always room to get better. We stay focused on that room to get better, but I want to make sure I'm doing my job as a superintendent to call out things that I know do not represent who we are as a district, but also inviting that conversation as well, because that's crucially important to me. So just wanted to end with that. We'll have more updates coming around our equity work and equity policy. That does conclude my report. Let me now pause for questions.
Not a question, just a comment. I want to thank you for supporting the idea of the staggered start for middle schools. I think that's a wonderful idea. I know it was very effective, it is very effective for our kindergartners, and I think it'll be a nice calming way to start the year with our middle schools.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a conversation with a sample of three middle schoolers driving, driving home from an activity, and I asked what they thought of it. And they were all rising 7th graders at Monti, and they were looking forward to the opportunity to walk their schedule in a little less of a, you know, chaotic first day environment where everyone's looking for their room on the first day, although one of them did say they're going to miss seeing the 6th graders coming through the school for the first time. So that was kind of an interesting, like, thinking back on their experience. So I thought that was, that was cute.
The 6th graders will probably still look the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Three days later, they'll still look like 6th graders.
Three days later, they'll still look small.
I will also say that July's meeting reminded me why I decided to pursue this seat. Oftentimes, the racism in our community hides behind a veil. Very rarely is that veil lifted and the racism so overt. It is true that our community looks different than it did in 1963, and that the graduating class of 1975 looks a lot different from the class of 2024. I recognize this shift frightened some, and it was rather disheartening and offensive to hear black families and students referred to as those families and those students. I can only imagine the harm caused in that classroom because the melanin in the skin of students was seen as a weapon. I'm thankful to the educators who opened up their hearts and minds to love our children and families and embrace the differences they may have. And so I unapologetically amplify and illuminate the voices of those families and those students, because my family is one of those families, and I was one of those students who transferred into the district in high school after spending most of my schooling as a CMSD student. And so here I sit today as one of those students in a position of influence and power within the district. So I appreciate your comments, Liz.
I appreciate your comments. That's-
Yes, thank you. I think we were all shocked and disappointed in how that was presented. So thank you.
Completely different topic. Should we, as board members, make an appearance for the new staff orientation and the new teacher orientations? Dr. Lombardo, is there a time that would be less disruptive or better or whatever?
No.
To welcome new employees? Please?
Yeah, please come up. Just gonna look on my calendar, what time I have it on here.
It's all day Monday and Tuesday.
Yes, we would love to have you at any portion of the day. We do have a breakfast in the morning. So if you can make it into breakfast, we will be introducing all the new staff, certified and classified. And then we'll be in the mini auditorium for most of those three days. So feel free to come in at any time. We'd love to have any of you there.
Okay.
Dr. Lombardo, I have it on my calendar from 8:30 to 10:30. Is that, the breakfast is starting at 8:30?
Yeah, it'll start at 8:30, and then we'll probably get the program started about 9:00.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also looking forward to the Family Resource Center event on Saturday. So
Yeah.
We encourage everybody to please attend that if you can. I'm not just saying my board members, I mean the community. It should be a wonderful event.
Yeah, last year's was the inaugural and was a really, really great event.
It was very successful.
It did not look like a first-year event last year, which I think is a testament to all the hard work that staff put in and other community groups and all the, like, connections that were being made. And now with the, you know, grand opening of the Resource Center there, I mean, before it was just in a parking lot, you know? And so now there's, there's something inside as well, and a year-round presence. So I think that's really great for our families.
That's excellent. The next item on our agenda is the Treasurer's report. We will not have one this evening, so the next item is the Board President's report. And let me get my President's report up. So on July 11th, I attended the ceremony to dedicate the gazebo at Walter Stinson Park to former University Heights Mayor Susan Infeld. Mayor, former Mayor Infeld was a, well, is a long-term public service servant to the community, and it was an honor to be there and be able to see this gazebo be dedicated to her. And then on August 1st, Molly and I met with Eric Zampf and Brian Anderson from the City of Cleveland Heights's Planning and Economic Development Department, and they want to ensure that the Board of Education is involved early on in the redevelopment of Severance. And to that end, they, we are inviting Ryan Porter from Impact, who is the developer that they're partnering with, to present to us during our board meeting work session on September 24th. So that will be one of the first items on the agenda that evening, and I did get confirmation that that works for Mr. Porter. So everybody tune in. It'll be interesting to hear what plans, you know, what they're thinking around the redevelopment of Severance. Also, I want to thank Chrissy Dietrich Gallagher, the Heights Athletic Boosters, and everyone who was involved in that carnival on August 3rd. It was a terrific event. And later that same evening, I also attended the Cumberland Pool Water Show, which was another terrific event. Fun, fun Saturday. And lastly, I wish that our Treasurer Scott Gainer were here, so I could congratulate him and his staff on receiving the OASBO, or ASBO, International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for our FY 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I just got the email on this yesterday. And in presenting the award, Nathan Williams, Financial Programs Coordinator for the Association of School Business Officials International, said, "Your continued participation in the Certificate of Excellence program is a testament to your district's commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting." So I'm sure we'll be hearing more about this, but it's excellent that, once again, Mr. Gainer and his team have won yet another award. And that concludes my President's report for this month. Are there any board committee reports? I know summer's kind of a slow time, so.
I mean, I was just gonna talk about the carnival and how amazing it was.
More things to say, go ahead.
The, I guess, it wasn't a dunk tank, but the dunk bucket, I guess, seemed to be the biggest hit, so.
No surprise on a hot day, right?
A hot day, so. A hot day, so.
But you could dunk a friend, too, so it wasn't just the administrator that was sitting there, you know, you could dunk a friend as well. But everyone seemed like they had a good, great time.
Great attendance, too. It was a good, good turnout, especially for a first-year event.
For the inaugural carnival.
Yeah, it's great.
I have been sitting in on these Monday evening Zooms that are being hosted by the Ohio ACLU about the political system in Ohio, and next week's, Monday, the, what is next week?
12th.
Monday, the 12th, thank you. That Zoom will be specifically about public education in Ohio. This week's was about gerrymandering and the process for citizen-led initiatives to make it onto the ballot. So I'm looking forward to Monday, the 12th, because that should be very interesting. And for kindergarten kickoffs, in the past, we, the board members, have tried to make an appearance to welcome new families to the district whenever we can. I can only do next week, I won't be in town, the week of the 19th, so I hope that we can kind of make sure that somebody's there to say hi to all the kiddies.
Around the week of the 19th, so I will probably be stopping by several of them. Gabe and Phil, you're welcome to stop by some as well. If you want, we can coordinate, you know, so we divide and conquer, so we're not at work.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Just a reminder to, for district families, get involved in your, your school's PTA. The district PTA meetings are going to be resuming this upcoming month, so it's been summer off, so I'll be hearing more about that. And I know we're kind of bordering on just like announcements and all of that. The City Club, Friday, August 16th, has a forum on enforcing civil rights in schools today-
Yes.
-with Catherine Lehman from U.S. Department of Education. She's the Assistant Secretary for Civil Rights. I don't know if anyone was planning on attending that. I'm interested in it. I'm looking at my work schedule, so if anyone is interested-
I'll be out of town, so I can't attend it, unfortunately, otherwise I would come.
When is it again?
Friday, August 16th at 11:30. It's like their lunchtime Friday forum.
I will be taking my kid back to Ohio State, so that day.
Yep.
Important work.
Yep. Important work. Is there any new business? Any unfinished business?
I don't know if it's unfinished. Well, I guess, yeah, it isn't complete. At a future board meeting, I'd love to continue the conversation around renaming Monticello and get an update on sort of where things are. I know summer was summer, but now everyone's leaning, and boy, oh, boy, am I seeing that name on the building a lot more, dropping off at volleyball and starting school year. So, yeah, love to see some progress and continued conversation.
Any correspondence and announcements? If not, then can I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Crenshaw, will you call the role?
Mr. Heinz? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw? Yes. Mr. Tremble?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned for the evening.
Thank you.
Be safe if the storms come.